Turn this camera on.
Very good Maurice.
Thank you. Okay, good evening everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the November 19th, 2013 Village of New Paltz Planning Board Meeting. It's now 7:02. My name is Maurice Whitehead, I'm the Chair of the Village Planning Board, and I'd like to call the meeting to order. Introduce to you other members, Michael Zerler, Rich Stephens. Our attorney is George Rodenhause, and our secretary is Alberta, don't tell me. Don't tell me. I'll get it. I had it and I lost it.
Shaw.
Shaw, of course. And coming in as we speak is Liz Harshol.
Sorry?
That's alright. On the agenda this evening, we have a public hearing for our item number PB1304. It's a proposed subdivision of the property at and near 15 Milbrook Road. And we have an application for a sign on Main Street. And there was an application for PB1306, decks at Town and Country condominiums, which we will not be hearing this evening, I'll explain why later. And we will be discussing fees necessary for Woodland Pond's addition of sunrooms on, I believe, three of their... And we're going to discuss, or at least begin discussing, a referral from the Village Board of Trustees for a request from a citizen to rezone three properties located in the flood district and the neighboring Gateway District. And we've got some minutes to approve. Mr. Zerler.
If we could add one small piece of business, just I want to bring to the board's attention Chapter 198 of the code that deals with bicycle racks and storage. Got a call from the Bike Pet community, and so just a couple items about that.
Okay, sure.
Thanks.
Okay. Mr. Niffen, let's see here. Come on up Floyd.
Mr. Niffen, chair.
Mr. Niffen, you're up.
You hesitate.
I didn't know if you were going to open the public hearing.
Oh, yeah. So the situation is that we last meeting voted to hold a public hearing today, and it was properly noticed, and, okay. And we were waiting for a response from the engineer, the building engineer, and I guess DPW and Fire Department. I think those are the only things that we need.
That's right.
Okay. So, and I understand that one of those is not ready, but what we will do this evening is begin the public hearing and continue it at the next meeting in anticipation of receipt of the report. So may I have a motion, please, to open the public hearing?
So move.
Second? Call in favor? Okay, Mr. Niffen, would you please present to the public and to us the project from the beginning, I guess? And then maybe bring us up to date with whatever we asked for at the last meeting.
Sure. So what I'm proposing to do is to relocate some lot lines in order to create three lots behind my existing house, and one lot along Henry W. DeBois. The three lots behind my house, as well as my house could be served by a private driveway, as well as village sewer, and they would have wells separately for each of the houses.
No microphone here. Sorry, there is no microphone, sorry.
You can see up front.
I'm sitting up front.
Not sure.
Or stand up. Perhaps you can...
If I didn't know I was going to be presenting, I would have tried to find an easel to... So, like I said, what I'm proposing to do is to add three new lots behind my existing house, as well as one lot along Henry W. DeBois by the sewer pump station. And in doing that, eliminating the same number of lots on the existing subdivision that's on Harrington Street. All the houses will be served by a private driveway and village sewer, and private wells for each house. And... Not sure what else specifically there is else to present related to it. I did move the lots out of what was considered, or is considered, the essential area for wildlife in the proposed Milbrook Preserve. So there is some encroachment in it, but for the most part, I'm way out of it with the new lots.
So net, there is not any new lots. It's a reconfiguration.
Correct.
Same number of lots.
Sure.
So it's actually lot line revision, but we're... We call it a subdivision, even though there aren't enough... Any comments or questions from the board? Okay. Members of the public would like to speak or ask questions? Yes.
There's a quick question, new lot, is that what is the fifth? Is that what it was, the same as what was there already?
The fifth lot is my house. Right now, my house is part of the... Yeah, my house is part of the...
Can you tell us again certified house, certified as what? Did you say the houses are...
Served by... Oh, I'm sorry, served by village sewer. Village sewer? They will have stuff that feels, so they'll be served by sewer.
May I ask your name, please?
Sounds okay.
Thank you.
Anover.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I just have one question for Floyd. On the lot you're talking about on Henry W.'s, like adjacent to my apartment.
Yes.
What I'm curious is how close would the structure be as a construction? I guess I want to know what you're doing. About that far along.
Right, on that lot, there's nothing proposed. As you know, there's a foundation for an old barn that was there. I was originally gonna... I had a building permit at one point to build a barn there, but I never followed through with it.
So...
But my guess is I would have to come back to the planning board.
So right now, there's no plan for structure or anything?
No, actually, there's a plan for...
Have you seen the drawing?
There's a plan for a future trailhead that's on the pump station side.
Facing the pump station?
It would be on the west side.
On the west side, okay. I guess my concern would be if there is something that goes in the house, of course, and now all that, whatever went, there'd be some space and business.
If it comes back to us. Okay.
There's one on Harrington, is that what you said?
I've eliminated some of the lots. I've replaced... I eliminated five lots on Harrington Street and moved them over to the other side, where my house is. So I'm basically shifting the lots over. You're coming in on the public comment. I'm not sure what she's talking about.
Harrington, where, you know, the part that's not developed, that's not...
Much better. No, there exists 26 lots there from an old subdivision from the 50s. I'm eliminating, I'm moving the lot lines to eliminate, or move the lots from the backside of Harrington Street over to my side.
If you'd like to come look at the drawing, or... But you can come and look at it, or you can go to the Building Department anytime to have a copy of it.
We'll have an extra one here.
So the lines he's eliminating?
Okay, and... Oh, eliminating.
Well, he has to show here.
So the whole thing is...
I suggest you sit down.
Okay, do you want to go?
You can hold on to that for this purpose.
Sure.
And we're just talking about the five lots at this time? Or we're talking about further development?
Nothing's being proposed on the rest of the property.
The rest...
I have a question. You mentioned something about wildlife limitations and such. Could you elaborate a little on that?
Yeah, it's been a while, but the...
Because I know that area was very nicely wooded.
Yes.
And it seems to me the houses were eliminated, some of them at least.
The town had a study, Mike might know better about this, but there was a study done for the proposed Milbrook Preserve, which most likely will be on this property, but behind there with Peter Beanstock's property and Woodland Pond's property, and behind using school, all those properties make up what will be a Milbrook... Yeah, Milbrook Greenway, I'm sorry, yes. When they did the study, they identified essential areas for wildlife, and on my property, there was an area, so I made sure I moved the lot lines to the outer part of that area.
To satisfy that.
Right, so it can maintain that essential area.
Any other questions? Comments from the public? Okay, so at this time, Floyd, I think we will say we're done for this evening. Do we need to vote to continue the...
Just adjourn?
Okay. So we have a motion to adjourn the public hearing for this evening. Second?
Sorry.
Call in favor?
Aye.
And, okay, so it's adjourned until the next meeting, and by that time, we should have the engineers' report, which would satisfy the requirements that we gave you last meeting. And...
The Fire Department.
Yes, what, you spoke to them?
Do you want me to review, Mal?
Sure, sure.
Fire Department is okay with the driveway being 18 feet and then necking down to 12 feet for the last lot? And they asked that, or they said that I can do a half hammerhead at the end. They showed me appendix D to fire code, which I wanted to sign that.
Alright, so, but they're going to furnish that as a report. But you see the report, you're pretty close, okay. Okay, so we'll see you in a couple weeks. The real date is... The is the 19th, Tuesday, December 3rd, at 7:00 PM. We will resume the public hearing. Thank you Floyd. Thank you ladies and gentlemen. I would remind you, any members of the public who wish to see the plans, they're available at the Building Department. Hey, thank you Floyd. Okay, we have a quick item for a sign that is being proposed for the intersection at Main Street and South Mannheim, in the northeast corner of the... What's that shopping center called, shopping area? Along where the... Whatever it is, okay. Where Dedrick's is. And we have more information than what we had before, which includes setback. And I think he's on the wrong side of this. I think the setback is from the inside of the sidewalk.
That's the required, right.
So that's got to be made clear to him. I'm sorry, is the applicant here this evening, Mr. Patino? He said he wasn't going to come.
Right.
Okay, so... George, could you summarize for us what you said? What it seems to me, we haven't been seeing these sign applications until a new part-time building inspector noticed that we should have approval of them. So this is new to us. And it seems that the Building Department, the Building Inspector, has certain code requirements that they know how to meet, that they know how to evaluate and meet. So I think we don't really have to worry about that so much. But the other items that George mentions in his meeting memo, which talks about the more planning issues of making sure that the signs conform to the guidelines and the intent of the master plan, and that it blends in with the area, and so on. George, can you summarize that to me?
Sure, and starting off, though, we do have to be sure that they were following the limitations on size and location. We've seen the location here, but I don't think, I haven't seen the picture of the sign.
I know, that was earlier. It was a bad picture.
That's all we add.
Supposed to be a ladder sign.
Yeah, six feet in height, five feet.
So the issues are the height and the size, square foot size, for a freestanding sign.
And do I recall that there's no lighting associated?
There's none on that.
Right, because I think there's street lights.
Yeah.
So if there is no lighting, that's fine. If there is lighting, it's got to be a certain type of lighting.
Right.
And then, if you got the right location, five feet setback from the inside, that is to say that away from the street, the inside edge of the sidewalk. And then you have, in the code, about 12 to 15 guidances, guidelines as to what it should look like. And I think the reason is before the planning board is to make sure that here, the planning board looks at it and exercises judgment to make sure that it's complying with those, such as protecting and enhancing unique visual qualities of new paltz. And they're very broad. Guidelines, the intent of the master plan, harmonize with the building's neighborhood and signs in the area, eliminate excessive unsightly competition, elimination of signs which may distract movers, and so on. Create an attractive economic and business climate. So it gives the planning board quite a bit of discretion to look at a sign and say whether or not it's appropriate. And then finally...
And at least some of that is design issues, right?
Right. There are all these questions, I think. And so, aside from the absolute size requirements, which are height and overall square footage and the number of signs you can have, the rest of it is in the discretion of the planning board. But then finally, the planning board only gets to approve certain signs, and they are these basically shopping center signs, which is what is, is office building signs. And the building inspector does the rest of them. So one thing we need to make sure of is that each site knows what we're doing. In terms of building, the inspector does some, but then picks others over here for the planning board to look at. And now on this one, the location, if the setback is done correctly, the location probably is in compliance. I don't know whether the size of the sign is in compliance, but we can figure it out.
I think the size could...
Yeah, I believe it.
Are the dimensions on it?
Yeah. Six feet by five.
Yeah, there is.
Yeah, about a meter at least.
Yeah, so... Six feet tall, five feet across. And so... 15 square feet. Only questions is what does the sign face?
Faces is the worst.
But I mean, we're exceeding 15 square feet, I assume.
Your 60 square feet.
One, two, three, four, five, six. It's four feet by five feet. Twenty square feet. Then it's too solid for the main part of the sign. Those have two faces. So what normally has to happen then is that if this exceeds, this size limited by the code, he has to go to the ZBDA to get a variance before the planning board can approve it. An area variance for the dimensions. And I would think that you include the triangle on top, which is an address, not the legs, not the structure.
Right.
But I think the triangle on top is part of the sign face. That looks like another... Another couple square feet, I'd say.
You all wouldn't mind, could I make a comment?
Yes, please Floyd.
Is history related to that location? The location where you're showing it was created as part of Convenient Deli's renovation, where we required them to add landscaping to that corner. Over the years, landscaping has decreased. The trees have gotten hit or whatever.
Right.
Now it looks like they're planning on using that spot for the sign. I don't know what else kind of landscaping is going to be going. Right, I would ask that you look at what was the approved landscaping plan?
That's a good idea.
For that project. And just one other thing, the existing signage on the buildings, I don't believe are compliant.
Compliant, right.
So that may need to be adjusted or to add additional some ridges.
I think they're entitled to...
If you go after a tape measure, which I did, and I went back and I got it, I don't know how you fit it.
Right, it won't fit with the right setbacks.
No. Not without losing at least one parking place.
Yeah, that's a bad thought.
And now you're already under a...
Yeah, we eliminated one parking space to get that landscaping, and that was kind of a big issue with some people.
There'll be at least one more to make this work.
I have a question regarding the signage. Even if the sign fits within the Village of New Paltz setbacks, will it be an obstruction to line of sight for traffic at that intersection?
You know, that was my initial concern, but that intersection does not have a right turn on red. So I assume you're worried about traffic coming out of South Mannheim?
Well, traffic at that intersection is a bit quiffy to begin with, because there's the middle school, and there's always the morning and afternoon traffic of parents dropping off and picking up their kids, and everything backs up. And you are on the main drag, so...
But what I'm asking is which, what are you concerned, what's your concern about?
Line of sight.
From where to where?
Specifically on Mannheim. Or coming east on Main Street and being able to see what's going on on South Mannheim. And is anyone familiar with the Department of Transportation rules that would pertain to a sign that close to an intersection? I'm not.
I'm not either, not yet. No, I, about the line of sight issue, I agree, it's an issue. I'm at that intersection 10 times a day, 10 times each weekday. And I, vehicles I'm driving are higher, but still, from here, there is no right turn on red here. So vehicles don't really need to see what's coming here. They just have to obey the signals. And from here to here, you can turn on red. But that's just the right turn without needing to really see very much.
How high up does the sign face begin?
Oh, from the bottom?
Yeah, in other words, the pole goes up how high until the sign face begins?
A foot, it's very low.
Yeah, but it's...
The top of it is six feet.
But it's six feet measured from the ground, and that's a...
Of which?
And that's a raised landscaping spot. So it's not six feet from the sidewalk, but six feet from the ground of that landscape area.
The ground there is not...
It's the same height as the sidewalk.
Is it?
Right, yeah. So anyhow, this bears more investigation, I would say. So we can't really do anything with this tonight. The applicant's not here to answer questions. So yeah, I'll speak with the building inspector.
I'd really like to see the site plan and has the parking spaces at least in proximity to where the sign can go.
And then the sign's scale.
Well, I asked for that, and this is what we're doing.
Yeah.
So, not unusual. Okay, so we will table this until next time. I'll speak to the building inspector, and I'll ask him about DOT. Was there something else besides DOT that we were concerned about?
Line of sight, but I think DOT could answer that.
Yeah, that's what... Okay. Okay, so let's talk about Woodland Pond, please.
About, oh, yeah, you said we're not doing it on the country.
That's right.
Excuse me, you're not trying to go on the condo project?
No, as I mentioned, we can't do it this evening because there were things missing from the applications, and so...
Wasn't it notified, I'm sorry? You should have gotten it ready for you. We submitted 13 sets of architectural forms, 13 site plans. I personally filled out the form. Now, I even called, and nobody informed us that there was missing items. Are there just questions?
No, there is the environmental, the EAF forms, and there was no...
That's not a necessity for environmental impact. We're only replacing the decks.
You know, there is that necessity.
Pardon?
There is that legal requirement that has to be there. Part of the site plan application has to include that.
How can we fill out an environmental impact when there is none? There is no criteria. We're only replacing something in kind. And we're talking about decks.
I understand that.
I have one impression with some other little feature here, I may be not aware of. These decks are dangerous. They have to be replaced. It's not an issue that we want to do it, we have to do it. And the longer this thing is delayed, the worse the situation is when this... One of these decks is going to collapse, and they're all going to be in soup.
In my... The building inspector office called me today at 2:00 o'clock, and they told me the meeting was 4:00 tonight. Everything was ready. If they had all the feet, then they would win that game.
Well, I don't know, when I spoke with, did I speak with you this morning, or was that Katie?
Me.
Yeah, and what was you told me earlier about the escrow?
That they would be dropping it off tomorrow and signing the MOU.
Okay, so there are some things, I haven't met with the building inspector. We now have a shortage of staff in the Building Department. And we have a part-time building inspector, and I haven't been able to meet with him on this application yet. I hope to do so later in the week. I think he's going to be in, do you remember the days that he's going to be in? I think it's Thursday or Friday. But I will speak with him then, and we'll make sure that everything is communicated to you properly. I apologize for the misunderstandings, miscommunications, but we have to do this in a way that satisfies the code and the law.
I was there in the Building Department and filled out the forms in front of the secretary. She didn't at that time tell me that there was anything else required. I almost had meetings with the building inspector. He's aware of our project, and we've submitted the papers, 13 sets of drawings. We're concerned that these things are going to collapse.
That's a separate issue that we can't help you with. If something is dangerous, you should talk to the building inspector about removing them. I can't help you with that, sorry.
Could I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm thinking of the spectrum between the point where the balconies, which, they're not at that point, but the point at which the balconies would deserve condemnation. That's one end of the spectrum. The other end of the spectrum is that we would be in some major building project. These balconies are decades old, and obviously, everything needs proper maintenance. These have been maintained, but they've been maintained in a way which has been sister this one, patch that one, put a new, and so on. And now we have reached the decision as a board that that's not the way to do it any longer. We might as well renew the exact thing. And we're not changing it, we're not making any beautiful architectural scheme about it. It's merely a 100% repair. It's maintenance. So at what point on that spectrum between not repairing it and being very remiss and deserving condemnation? At what point on that spectrum between that and some... At what point on that spectrum between that and some major building project? Where is the sweet spot where we don't have to treat it like a major project? It's maintenance. We don't, you know, it's like putting on a new roof. Your roof hasn't changed, you're just renewing it. We're renewing the balconies. So where is the place on that spectrum where we don't have to go through this?
I don't know of any sweet spot there. I know that when anything like a deck that requires review for setback for compliance with code, when anything has to be built, and I don't know that there's a difference between rebuilding something and building it from scratch.
There is no difference.
I mean, this actually raises the question for me. I'd like to know which part of the code requires more than a building permit for this. Because it is a replacement, there's no change in the footprint. The plans that we got are honestly beyond my purview. They're highly technical construction plans. So I, and maybe because I wasn't here at the last meeting, I missed something, but I actually.
I just wasn't here at the last meeting.
Oh, okay. I don't even, I'm not clear why this is in front of us. If it is in fact a replacement, which I understand.
I agree, I had that question before I went to the.
Okay, well, anyway, let me just ask again if you're agreeing with me, that's fine. Thanks.
Okay, let's, I'm reacting to an application that came to us.
No, I understand, and I understand why we're holding it up.
Yes, but I don't know why this came to us.
Well, it came to us as a modification to an existing building. So it seems to me if.
But Berwick wasn't.
If what this is is exactly what is there now, in other words, you dug out the plans from 1965 or whenever it was built, you're saying it's decades old. Okay, so you've got the plans out, basically, what was built then, and you're duplicating it now, and you're building exactly what was built then.
Because.
So the question is, excuse me, the question would be, is there any difference between what you're building now and what was built then?
Yes, it was not built very well.
Because the old code doesn't apply anymore, so you need to apply a new code. That's why we hired the architect to comply with the current New York State code.
Yeah, but this is building.
Did they get bigger?
No.
Exactly the same size as this? They just built the current code as opposed to the code they were building.
Because of cantilevering, we were told the cantilevering.
Then it should be.
Yeah, it's no modification.
So that vertical supports didn't have.
Exactly.
I want to point out one other thing. These decks were ill-conceived when they were built, all they did was take the floor beams that were not pressure treated and cantilevered them out. Now, this is 40 years. They've rotted, they've been patched, it's time for them to be replaced. I have photographs here that show you that some of the structural elements have rotted and fallen out. So this is the issue that hurts. We're not.
I think it's a good question because do they require them to the planning board? Because I had that question because I don't see it, and I don't see anybody who will do just a replacement on the balcony, you need to come for all of these things. So I'm not sure how I'll answer that question because I had that question, and they don't need to go there, and I don't know what the answer will be to come here. I did not see that we would need to come here.
The building inspector sent it here because he proposed a modification of the building.
They're drawing specifically a replacement, and that's what we are doing.
I understand what you're saying, but it sounds like there's a change. The change being that you're replacing cantilevered decks with supported decks.
Because.
For whatever reason, there's a change.
So that's.
And normally, the rule is that when you do a site plan, the site plan includes the visual view of the building. In other words, the site plan is not just the footprint, the site plan looks at your elevations of buildings and whether it fits the community. There's all these standards in the zoning code. So when you do something to the building that changes the elevation, the visual elevation of it, that's a modification. Whether it's major or minor, it might depend on how long it takes to get through the planning board. If it's minor, you know, it shouldn't take very long. But it sounds like there's a difference between what there is now and what's being proposed. And so that's why it's a modification, that's why it's here.
So the, excuse me, just a second. So the issue is the change from the cantilevered beams, removal of those, and then modifying it to meet the current codes?
And there might be other things that the building inspector noticed. I don't know. We don't have any of that. We were treating this as a change to an existing building, a modification to an existing building. That's what we were told by the building department, and that's what we have to go by.
I think the building.
The new apartments?
I mean, we can't leave them like that. We're changing the work.
Recourses ZDA then to say the building inspector's wrong, because the building inspector is the code enforcement official. So he's the only one.
Or we could just go through the process. I mean, that's the.
Yeah, I mean, it's not such a horrendous process. If it's a simple change, it shouldn't take very much time to review it.
There's no reason, I mean, I have your environmental assessment form, and you just drew a line through every page. There's no reason why the building department should have accepted that. They should have informed you that you're required to fill this out. Even if everything is, does not apply, does not apply, you still have to fill it out. It's the state law, it's not our law. We have to have every plan, every project that comes in front of us has to have an environmental assessment form, regardless of whether it has an environmental impact, and most of them, many of them do not. But you can't just draw a line through that page. And that was unfortunately what happened, whoever filled it out.
I'm sorry, but you have discretion to, you can modify.
No, we don't have discretion when it comes to the seeker.
I was a member of a planning board in City of New York for six years, and we did have it. And I've been an architect for 60 years, I mean, before many planning boards. And they had the discretion, all right, to waive certain requirements. When you're putting back a duck that was there before.
Can I interrupt you?
All right, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm trying to make this as simple as possible for you.
Okay.
And I'm, that's why I asked the question about this. I mean, I understand the rules and what the quote-unquote modification is. I don't happen to agree with it, but it is, you know, I'm one person on this board, and we have to make that decision. If we can make it, you know, my objective is to try to get you through this as quickly as possible, all right? And I'm just telling you that at this planning board, I have never seen, and I've been in front of the planning board, I've either been on the planning board or the liaison to the planning board now for a long time, and I have never seen them waive a secret requirement, okay? And you may have seen it in other communities, but I've never seen it here. So in any event, if we could just, if you allow the board an opportunity to try to work through this, nobody here is trying to hold you up because we don't believe that these are unsafe, or we don't believe that this is a relatively minor project in the scope of things. So let us try to figure out the best objective here. Thank you.
Again, my basic question still stays the same. Do we require to come to the planning board? Because I don't see that this is a project that requires to come here. So then who's going to be the decision?
That's the law, sir. It's the law. It's the way our code is written, it's the way New York State law is written with the requirement that there be a secret review for building modifications. This was considered by our building inspector to be a modification to a building.
So if there is an interpretation of the building inspector that says, so if we have an issue with that interpretation, what do we do?
Well, you can go, as Mr. Niffen said, you can go to the zoning board of appeals and say that you want to have a review of the building inspector's decision. And say that this is, that you don't think this should fall to that level of scrutiny by the planning board.
We don't want to do that.
Or we can, what can we do this evening? Assuming we're going to take this one, is there anything we can do without the seeker?
You could put it down for public hearing.
Do we have to have a public hearing?
Well, maybe. If we assume that the building inspector made it a building modification because there's some change, if we assume that that's what the reason was referred to us, then the planning board has to have a hearing on the site plan modification that would approve this drawing.
Have you looked at our site plan? Have you noticed that everything we're doing is inside of our property, half a centimeter and a half acres? It doesn't affect.
No, I haven't seen the site plan.
Environmentally, it doesn't affect anybody visually. And who are you going to ask to comment, make comments about it?
Everybody within 200 feet of the property.
They're not near the property.
Property line.
The closest anybody comes is 600 feet.
Well, that's how stated your question, that's all.
But how can they have any input into this stuff?
So, okay, so in general, so is it possible for us to schedule a public hearing for the next meeting, and then that would completely fill out the secret application? And we could presume we dissolve this in two weeks?
I think on rare occasions, we schedule a public hearing when we don't have all the information, but we at least have a completed application. We already have a completed application now. Failed to fill out one of the basic requirements of a completed application. The ones you take very little time, there's no big changes here.
Right, but unfortunately.
I mean, I grant it's gone from a one-page sheet to several pages, but it's not a more difficult form than it used to be. It's one of the basic requirements of our application, and we try.
And unfortunately, they didn't.
I mean, I don't think I have any problem with what we're looking to achieve.
I would bet that most of us have no problem with what you want to do.
Be pretty upset.
But we have to go through a process that is prescribed by code and state law.
How can you expedite, how can you expedite, so before this balcony is collapsed?
The only thing I can do now is meet with the building inspector and have someone in the building department. Unfortunately, we're at a point where we have too fewer people than we had over the spring. So the woman who is there now, Holly, is doing the work of three people and not doing it well. And she's trying, but she is way overburdened. And I took up some of the slack, but I can't keep doing a vacant building inspector's job to review things. I can't do it. I have a life also.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, Mr. Zerelman.
Perhaps one of the other planning board members could arrange to meet whoever your representative is, if it's you, sir. Maybe one of the other planning board members could arrange to meet you or whoever your representative is who's authorized to fill out these forms at the building department office, say, tomorrow, and go through the secret process with you and make sure that everything is, are we aware of anything else it needs? Is there a fee or something that needs to be paid?
Well, there's an MOU and an escrow deposit that has to be made. And apparently, according to Alberta, that was communicated to them today, and they were going to bring it in tomorrow.
Okay, so that could be part of the.
The secret has to be done. And I frankly would really like to speak with the building inspector about this to see what's going on.
All right, well, then I'm just trying to offer an alternative.
I understand that. So I don't know what, about having a public hearing next time without us having the time to look at this before, I'm a little nervous about that. I don't think that's appropriate at this point.
Well, you have the plans now.
I'm sorry?
You have the plans now.
I understand that, but sir, we don't.
I know you have the environmental impact.
We don't have the completed application. We must have a completed application in order to begin this.
I'll be in the building department tomorrow morning, and I'll fill out the application, all the stats and all the lines. You have it, you have the drawings. I'll fill out the form tomorrow.
Changing drainage, we're not going to change. Sorry, just confirming, there's a good reason to speak to the building inspector and make sure he's satisfied with.
Yes, so I really need to speak with the building inspector. I don't know what his schedule is. He works 10 hours a week. I don't know when he'll be available.
Can I give you my card?
Sure.
And you contact me as soon as you can, and whatever needs to be done, I will do it.
Okay. I appreciate the desire to get this done quickly for safety and every other reason. I understand, and I would like to help.
Well, one of the balconies is my fault.
So you have a dog in the fight, as they say.
It just happened recently, in fact, beam stuck falling out.
Okay, sorry for the delay and the misunderstandings. We'll do our best to.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Make it better.
Maurice?
Yes?
So we'll put this on as a topic for next meeting, but not as a.
We'll figure it out when I speak with the building inspector.
So that would be December?
I hope so.
If.
We make the first and third hearings.
We should be able to at least meet then, whether we can have a public hearing by then. We can have a public hearing by then, but we can meet then, and we can make sure that everything is right, so that when we have the public hearing, that will be it. But right now, I really need to speak with the building inspector about this to find out what else he saw here that isn't, that is not an implication.
And we can take action same night as a public hearing if everything's in place.
One question, if when you speak with the building inspector, if there were a miscommunication, may I understand it could still be removed from this board? If there's a chance, there's still be, say, no, the only the building inspector need to get the building permit, and that's it?
I don't see how that would happen, but if he says that there is no modification to the building, then it could be a building permit, which without our review, right? But that would be up to him.
The way that I understand the modification are the one required by code, because what is there going to be revealed, the way it's.
Yes.
So it's a modification in a way that isn't required for the code.
Okay, so I'll be in touch with you, Mr. Dijon. Sorry for the problem. We'll do our best to correct.
Yeah, we'll work it out. Just want to do it as fast as we can.
I agree.
There are structural issues.
Winter's coming, everything's a problem, right? I get it. Okay, sorry about that again.
Oh, you're welcome.
Mr. Rose, Mr. Woodland? Or Mr. Pond?
Oh, we got both, Woodland and Pond.
Application fee will be issued for this.
I'm sorry, the application.
I'm just going to say, the application fee for, if this is going forward, the application fee is the question for town country as well.
Yeah.
The discussion we're going to have with Woodland Pond.
Well, it just looks like that.
Mr. Brunel, Mr. Pond, please have a chat.
I'm Jim Wing with Patio Enclosures in Albany, where the sunroom manufacturer wants to put the free rooms on the cottages.
John Smith, silly person.
Is that really your name?
Yep.
Okay.
So I got an email from Mr. Travis to say to come on down, the board wanted to.
Right, let me explain some background here. We got a call from the building inspector wanting to know how he should charge a fee for your, it is three cottages, I think?
There was three individuals, customers that.
Right. And the way he calculated the fee based on his reading of the code, it was something like $15,000 or more. It was a lot of money. And he was not happy with that. And, but we were trying to, trying to figure out how we can do this legally without setting bad precedents. And we wanted to know, we asked the building inspector, he didn't know. I spoke with you briefly about that to find out if there are more proposed or possibly that will be coming along, so we have to go through this again. So we wanted to hear from you what.
Right now, we have 28 cottages. And right now, we have three proposed pre-season rooms. Really small extension on each, from here, on each cottage.
Yes.
There's other people that they're not interested really. So these are pictures here. This would be our cottages.
The way it's now?
That's the way it looks right now, right? So all I would do is put a little bump out right here, and close it right there.
So you're extending it further?
Yes, they are extending it, yeah. If you could see here, you've got about eight foot here, and you've got about 10 feet over here. Some of it. Some of them got about three feet or four feet. Some of them are very small. These are one of the foundation plan showing me how far they're going out from the existing open porch.
Might we see that as well?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. Each one are a little bit different, but they don't protrude out. That's the new foundation plan off of the cottage.
Oh, I see.
Wait here.
Continuation of E.
Right.
Okay. None of them go beyond the existing facade. People next door go absolutely crazy if they just want to mine it. This here, what we do here is just extend this out, extend it down, so on and footprint.
Fill it into space.
Exactly, it fills that small space, yeah.
Okay, so it doesn't change the roof drainage, right?
No. Neither just in back of the cottages.
How does it change roof drainage?
It doesn't.
It doesn't change the roof drainage.
We're going with the same line.
We're going to leave this on, leave the guards on, it's going to shoot out their knees, and then they're going to come on and so forth. He's the manufacturer, he builds it, he puts it in. We have, Tony Dietz is going to do the concrete for us, and so on and so forth.
Okay, so, I think we had a question, Liz.
Yeah. Yeah, I have a question. You say that there's 28 cottages. Just for my own clarification, is that 14 duplex cottages?
Yeah, 14 duplex cottages.
Okay. And of these 14 duplex cottages, are all three of these...
Separate.
So, they will only affect one of the two cottages in each duplex?
Exactly, correct. So, this way, if the person lives next door, they have their privacy, they can have theirs. This way, it doesn't have to extend. Next person can have their privacy even if it doesn't...
And in the case of this request for three cottages being affected, in all three cases, it's only one of the two duplexes?
Correct, that's correct.
Thank you.
Now, these cottages aren't individually owned, right? Owned by Woodland Pond. Owned by Woodland Pond. Owned by Woodland Pond.
But the people who are paying for the improvements are... Who's paying for these?
People who pay for these improvements, like if they want to put a granite countertop, if they want to put...
Since house owner.
It would be cottage owner.
Okay.
Individuals, basically.
Right.
John, are you with the Woodland Pond?
I'm with Woodland Pond, yes. So, who picks up the increased tax bill? Where not for profit?
To pilot.
Also on pilot forever?
No, not forever.
Not forever.
So, when it's off of pilot, then it'll be assessed at whatever that is.
Renee, are you no real estate taxes?
I thought the cottages were taxable.
I'm not sure. Yeah, I'm not sure. The cottages are part of taxes. Special services.
So, there's no application, is there?
No.
Oh, okay. There's nothing. There was a query from the building inspector, how do I charge this things, it's all based on site plan modification, I think it was.
So, is he assuming a building modification? Once again, this is a... There was a site plan for each of these cottages that was approved, and so there was a modification.
You have the site plan?
No, it was the site plan for the whole complex.
The nursing section and the apartments and those huge site plans, so we take a percentage of that site. The way determines the fee on this is the whole site plan.
Right.
We're talking about three cottages.
Right.
Well, when I ran through this, I looked at Section 1223 A2B2, they put in here, I think that's 280, that is the application fee for an application covered through, or through 728 to the same car. It's just one fee for the modification paid to the town as the review.
By the village.
By the village, I'm sorry, for the modification.
It'll be a one-time fee for 28s?
It'll be one-time fee if you're doing 28, you could do threes for the three.
So, the initial three people may be paying for everyone else, I guess.
No, we are...
The next time somebody comes in again...
They're going to pay you.
800 or something again.
Well, that's why it makes sense to do them all if you know about any others.
We don't get them.
There's just nobody else that wants them, so I did wonder if we're saying, I'd take 875 for the fee, it's reasonable. If it's one or 20.
Yeah. Your secret, which again is a negative declaration, probably like the other one, you need to know about all the plans.
Right.
Any plan sort of for next week or next month or something like that, you got to put it in there.
Right.
But if there's none, there's none.
Yeah, as of right now, there is none, so these are the three, you know, that we know. These three, when we started this back in...
July.
In July. We've just been waiting for the fee because I, again, I didn't, I've got three customers and they need to know if they're going to be paying $5,000 a piece or $250 a piece, that piece, you know. So, that's what we've been waiting, just to kind of determine this before we can turn the application in. Can you bridge this down to a formula so we can all understand how you did this, or... I don't know.
I took it right out of there.
Yeah, it's there.
Why don't Richard do it, because that's a high number.
He was working from the...
I think he was the original fee.
Original fee.
The original cost of the private.
George, the part of the code that refers to modifications to the site plan, new construction, he came up with this, which seems like the best.
It's in the appropriate place, yeah.
Yeah, it seems like the right fit.
Put yourself down for a raise, George. Yeah, right.
So, do we vote on this, or...
I don't know. Do we need to take any action? Can I just say that you're not to...
You got to say that fees should be... I think you said this was a opinion of the planning board.
Okay.
We don't have an application?
No, no. There is an application. We're talking about the fee.
Oh.
How to calculate the fee?
Yeah, they'll do the... Right, that's all. Why not?
We'll need to take a motion, once we do that, you can send your application.
May I have a motion to approve George's calculation in the meeting memo that says the original fee for Woodland Pond would have been calculated under 21223A2B5? Paying attention?
Okay, good.
New construction, site development, up to a quarter acre, 700, and so on. I'll be nothing. Quarter to a half, 1,400, half to one acre, 3,000, over one acre, 3,500. One quarter of $3,500, because it's over an acre, is $875.
So moved.
Quarter, 32.
Yeah, that's right, 3600.
32, yes, to this. So...
So moved.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So, we have to send a note, a letter to the building inspector quoting this. Do you have a copy of this meeting memo?
I will.
Okay. So, you can just quote that whole paragraph for him?
Okay.
And say that the planning board agrees that the fee charged should be $875 for all three proposed sunrooms.
Each, 875?
Total, for all three. Total.
All three, okay.
Not each.
If I didn't send this to you, I would send it to you. Good morning, if I put that something...
So, with the application fee, with the applications for all three, a check of 875 will cover that process of it. Building permit fees will be on top.
Thanks, George.
So, that's really what we need to do.
No, actually, you're going to have to pay them. Maybe this guy...
You need to... Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. See you guys again.
Absolutely.
Thanks, folks.
How does that affect the fees?
Well, you know, I don't know.
That's a good question.
What do the building inspector charge you?
Were you charged an application fee?
Yes.
1100 for two check, 1100 and 100. We have paid 200 dollars for the application. And today, we got the call that we need to hide and scroll down. Our managing company talked today and say, well, you can move it forward, we'll bring the check tomorrow because...
But that was an escrow.
No, it's 500. We have paid 1110, 1100 and 100.
Yeah, something like that.
Yes, that's what it says on the application.
250 and 1100.
1200 in total.
Well, if you can't figure it out, fine. Let's see what the 1100s are.
I'll see if I can get a clarification of that as well, but...
I mean, we just said they have, we just bring whatever they have. I didn't know that...
It was 250, 250 free pilot fee, and it was based on so much, we figured it's estimated to be $60,000.
Yeah, I understand.
That's the recount, is that what's wrong? More of it.
Right. Okay, thank you again. So, we have here...
That's not, this is a...
No.
No, no, this is just on the back of one building and a little bit of another building.
Okay, moving on. Moving along even. Under the other business category, we have a discussion on the request from the Village of New Paul's Board of Trustees.
I'm going to leave the table.
Thanks for that. For rezoning for three properties currently in the flood district and neighboring the Gateway District. And the reason why Mr. Stephens is leaving the table is that he has a financial interest in one or more of those properties. So, what came from, do you have a copy of what came from the village?
I just have the minutes.
Alberta, yeah, that's all I have.
Yeah, that's all there is, I see. There's one paragraph or so. I think that's as a referral. Yeah. So, from the minutes, it says that trustee Rocco, trustee Rocco... Stated that he brought this matter to the board on the recommendation of planning board attorney George Rodenhouse. Rich Stephens addressed the village board. Don't look at me, not look at me. Rich Stephens addressed the village board by stating that he was not representing the planning board and disclosed that he is more than interested in this matter, and in fact, he is a property owner. Trustee Rhodes moved to have the planning board attorney, Mr. Rodenhouse, make a recommendation regarding the rezoning of four lots. And that was seconded. Mayor West opposed it, and one member was after the motion carried. So, this doesn't say very much about what Mr. Stephens asked, and I don't know how we can find out without asking the person there. Mr. Stephens, do you know anything about this?
I know something about this. Currently, those four lots are zoned F.
Are these over lots along?
Water Street, yes.
On the west side of Water Street?
On the east side of the rail trail, on the west side of Water Street.
Right.
Do you run all for them?
And they go from where to where, what building?
They go from the Gateway District as it crosses the rail trail. There's a box factory is the first one.
Right.
There's a little two-story house, number 17 is the second. I'm the third one, which is number 15, and there's number 13. So, there's three little houses.
So, from the box factory, are we going north or south?
We're going south. Box factory, three little houses. The rest of the property going to the intersection going to Plains Road, Water Street ends at Plains Road, is owned by the village. It's a very, very narrow strip property. And of course, behind it is the rail trail. The house I own actually used to own land on the other side of the rail trail, and it was donated over to the village as a small park. But the property, we're not talking about trying to change the flood plan, we can't do that, only God can change that in the Army Corps of Engineers, who think they're God. But that's just an aside. The zoning, however, is F. And F zoning is what you can again do in the flood plains. What the only permitted use being agricultural, golf courses are special use permit, recreational indoor uses are special permit. None of the uses include, any of the uses that are currently there. None of the uses are anything that would encourage any development in that area in terms of better use of that land. And it's adjacent to the gateway zoning. The gateway zoning much better fits these four properties. The gateway zoning would allow these properties to develop little shops in that area, would allow it to develop offices, but it'll go before the planning board, whatever it is that has to go before the planning board. It does not change the flood plan in terms of construction, however. Still has to meet construction standards for flood plain. It does change the uses by changing it from F zone to gateway zone. So, that's what we're looking to do.
I'm not sure that I understand that last second.
For example, the house I own is a tiny little 1848 I-brow colonial. If I wanted to add on to this house, this house has a footprint of 19 by 23. If I wanted to put an addition on to this house, I couldn't do it because I would be expanding on a non-permitted use. Because currently, in the F zone residential is not a permitted use. In Gateway, it would be. If I wanted to turn that little house and put in a T-room with access off the rail trail, right down from the village markets, I couldn't do it because it couldn't be a T-room, that's not in the F zoning. All I can do is make it a riding academy, a farm, a golf course, and all these other uses that is completely ridiculous. In other words, any use of that property other than what's already grandfathered there is silly. It just won't work.
I think the question was, you referred to flood plain construction requirements, and then you referred to zoning requirements.
Right.
The question is, what do you mean by flood plain construction requirements?
Building code talks about constructing buildings in flood plains and what you have to do in order to construct the flood plains. Not just the building itself, sometimes the underlying ground. You disturb as much underlying ground, you kind of replace it with other... It's a very rigorous set of building restrictions that are placed on floodplain buildings. And rightfully so, especially in the way we all experienced that. We can't, sorry, zoning can't change that. That's Army Corps of Engineers set, and that has nothing to do with our local zoning.
No, no matter what we call it.
Because it's in a theme.
We can call it whatever we want.
It's a theme of that flood plain area.
Yeah. And the building restrictions are governed by the code. We can make it more restrictive as a community, but we can't, and believe me, they are very restrictive, so... For example, I just had to put a new deck on this little 1848 house because the steps were falling off of it. I couldn't put a new deck on because to build the new deck in accordance with floodplain restrictions would have cost me 25 hundred bucks. I instead had to build it out of stone, and so I wound up building the stone-earthing deck, for lack of a better word, in order to get into the house because you couldn't build a wooden deck and have it meet floodplain restrictions. But that won't change, it would change in zoning. It rolls by any other name.
What would happen to the usage of the box factory?
I would like to, and I do not have an interest in the box factory. I would like to see the box factory develop a couple of little small shops on what would be its second-floor storage that would have access directed to the rail trail. Art gallery would go great there. A T-room would go great there.
What if you wanted to build housing there?
Again, it has to come before the planning board for anything to be built there.
Right.
You, you know, your driveway has some problems with parking for housing, just to be able to put it on site. Because we don't have twenty-four hour parking on the street. The good thing about Gateway zoning is that Gateway zoning is, is really planning board driven.
Right.
It's really, you know, does it make sense? We'll prove it. If it doesn't make sense, we won't prove it.
Right.
So it's very planning board driven. What was my brother's little cabin? Is similar to the house I own. It's right there on the, on the west side of the rail trail. He's Gateway zoning. I'm on the east side. I'm F zoning. What's interesting is that he's on the flooding side of the railroad. I am protected by this huge dike called the rail trail. Even in the last horrific flooding, water she didn't flood other than runoff from being down so low at the bottom of the village. Run off from the hills coming down. It wasn't the river that did that. Um, so it, it's protected by this massive dike called rail trail. We also shot the elevations of my building and the first floor of my building is actually outside of the flood plain. Where I touch the road, I'm in the flood plain as defined by elevations. But it was easier to go and build this stone patio than it was to fight John or four engineers, who was right and who was wrong, so.
How long ago was the flood zone put in place?
Oh, boy. When did we adopt zoning? I mean, it's best about as old as it be. Now, a lot of it has to do with, a lot of it will never be anybody. It's just obvious that you're not returning the area out of the.
Yeah, the blue area.
Beyond, you've been on the street out there, you're not gonna take that.
We're talking about these properties, this, yeah.
Now, I've got, I brought a copy of the tax method.
I thought the record showed that Mr. Stephens didn't come to the outside of the table.
Here's the rail trail. Here we're crossing over, this is Water Street Market. Here's the, the box factory. This is actually vacant, part of this plant here.
Which is the pla- the, the place that is vacant is the one that has the factory stairs.
Yeah, yeah.
On the wrong side of the street. This is the box factory. Says Water Street coming down. They're calling it Plains Road here. That's actually Water Street. On the little property that is over. It's administered.
Do you think this is the edge of the, that's the edge of the flood plain?
Yeah, it's right along that. It's on the west side of the road.
You wrote something a little bit of a different, I guess.
Not really.
I think when the rail, plenty of railroad additions to keep it
in the place, right.
At an elevation from railroad to form it down.
Right.
But it's turned out to be a nice dike. Something to take care of what happened to Water Street back there.
No, I think the rail beds, the dike.
The real purposes of flood zones generally is to keep zones out of the flood zones. To make them non-conforming so they don't actually go away. And, and I know you can build, you can build on structure, you can build higher up and you can build in accordance with flood management rules, but I don't know what the purpose of this flood district is yet, but if I look at it, probably gonna say that these are non-conforming uses because they shouldn't be there.
Although I don't think that would be the case, but, no.
Well, why is it non-conforming? If the only permitted uses are recreational, I mean agricultural and some other passive uses, they don't have structures. It sounds like maybe it's old fashioned, but it's the way flood zones generally are written, that you don't. That's where the town, for example, the town, of course, has gone through litigation on this and been upheld their flood zone. And in certain areas do not allow, more than agricultural, the same, same kind of language.
Right.
Most of the people that make non-conforming uses, non-conforming is that they'll eventually go away. They won't be added on to. I understand what you're saying is that from the town's development perspective, it doesn't make sense to have these buildings be unused, to go away or be constricted to what the size is now.
Right. Especially when they have this unique feature that keeps them out of the flood area.
Right.
And they're also, you know, adjacent to this Gateway district makes it so that you don't have to consider this as flood zoning issue. We just add it to the Gateway zone.
Well, that's definitely true, that being adjacent to Gateway and in terms of playing, it might make sense to the board to say this extension or the expansion of Gateway is the correct thing to do. It's definitely, I mean, I don't know what I can do in this process. It's definitely a board decision from a planning perspective as to whether the board thinks this is the right way to go or whether, because in fact nowadays flooding is a major concern, much more of a concern than it was a hundred years ago. And we're all talking about now how to deal with resilient communities, how to make sure that we're ready for the next flood. Certainly, a little higher up in the Cass Hills is, is a daily issue. So, I mean, one wouldn't just give you the flood zones quickly unless there's a good reason. I'm not saying you shouldn't do it. I'm just saying that there's a reason flood zones are there. It's a reason people are getting more and more concerned about it and trying to create some sort of buffer between the floods and the, and the active business community. That's the speech. I don't, I don't know if it affects anyone, but I think that one important thing to understand is whether there's a real sound basis for this flood zone. Whether the flood maps are changing and they have been changing quite a lot lately. Uh, new maps are coming out this year for Ulster County.
Yep.
I don't know whether this is reflected in a new map or not, whether that's worth looking after the planning board to make his own decision as to whether this is now more so in the flood plain or less in the flood plain, whether flood plain has gone up or down on this side of the river. Those issues might be relevant before we decide whether or not this should be changed.
Is this the only flood plain in the village?
No.
The whole, the blue area, there's two parts to it separated by the.
This also is a flood plain, no?
No, that's just the same color. That's.
Oh, you'd be three, okay.
So over by Huguenot down into the.
And the area that's flood plain.
Into the river in the swamp area.
The flood ma- flood plain map is right there. That's the FEMA map.
Well, it's an aerial, yeah.
Yeah, that's their map. If you can read it.
Yeah, most of the land that the village has is flood plain. You would argue it's flood plain. There's nothing built there.
Right.
It goes underwater every year. It's the area that's the bird sanctuary, the area behind the.
Where everybody goes ice skating and.
I did build two houses very close to it on Plains Road over the years. But even though I've got to shoot the elevations to get them up high enough but to, you know, right there on the beginning of Plains Road.
Do you have the elevations for your properties or not yours, for all these properties?
No, not for all those properties.
For the, for the most recent flood plain maps?
I've got hands on it. I'm sorry, I've got hands.
I mean, the board could get it too by contacting FEMA to find out. What matters are that. I mean, it's the only piece of research I can see as useful is to understand whether, whether this is serious flood area or not so serious. Not anecdotally, but in terms of what FEMA has determined. Whether you're foot below flood level, two feet above, I don't know what, you know, just to know basically how this land relates to the flood levels that FEMA is now publishing.
Well, that would be the, one of the worst floods we've had. So there's a five in there. Did not flood that area down there. Because of that new dike. That railroad wasn't there, we had a different story. And the house wouldn't be there. The box factory wouldn't be there.
What it has?
But what we do have there is, um, I would really like to see the quality of the houses on either side of my upgrade. There's no reason to upgrade those things.
So.
How much you got?
I'd, I'd like to just say something and then ask our attorney's first opinion. I don't know enough about this to say how we should proceed. I'm gonna ask George that. But it seems like some of the questions that George is asking you and some of the information that needs to be obtained, it seems like it should be your burden to provide and present to us. And I don't know what sorts of things that would be other than you would ask for elevations of the, of the properties and so on, but I'm, I'm, I'm happy to consider this in any way that makes sense. I don't know what recommendation to make to them. We can't say anything to the village board now other than you know, we'll ask for more information and we'll leave it at that. But what, what sorts of things do you think we should ask?
George, let me just say that I'm talking about attractive land that's wide. This is forty feet. And it goes along maybe six hundred feet.
Yeah, I can see it's pretty narrow.
Really narrow strip.
So I'm not for or against it. I'm just saying that for the.
No, I just, I'm not familiar with what the land is.
Yeah.
But we're not talking about a, a plain like the town has.
I'll drive down there and look at it, but it the, it seems like we ought to see the most recent FEMA maps for that district and be able to compare that with the elevation of the land to know. And that, that will be shown on FEMA map. It should be shown.
Should be.
Yeah, so that we, we can see what they think the situation is. I don't think you have to refer to FEMA at all, but village engineer might have some better handle on it too.
So I'd like us also to look at the, um, I mean, for me anyway, I'd like to go away and look at the Gateway zoning in detail and see if we did change this, what the positive and possible negative issues are around changing that. Cause I agree with Rich, there's opportunities there. But I, you also raised some questions about what it, and I would be with you on that.
Yeah, and also, you know, I don't know anything about the box factory's history or anything like that. I see there's a drum guy in there that, you know, they sell firewood and pellets and who knows what else. And it's kind of ugly and it's kind of, uh, not attractive for a Gateway item, but, um, but it would be great to have something that would be useful to the community, I think. Uh, my fear is that without proper checks in place to know what we can say about future development there, that it could just remain an eyesore or become worse, become something we can't have. I appreciate that we will need to, if they wanted to put housing in, let's say, that we would have, it would be a complete review and so on, but still. I would love for you to give us that information that we've spoken about and we could talk about it more. I'd like to also be able to move along with this. John, do you have any questions or?
Well, I mean, I guess the, the box factory can't really develop anything or improve anything with it being in a flood plain right now, can it?
No, it has rotating businesses that seem to be.
But I mean, it couldn't go in and structurally develop itself. So really the, the hope that it wouldn't become worse depends in some, to some degree whether it would have the capability or the ability legally to, to develop.
Well, probably can't expand. That's Richard saying, if you're not conforming.
Right.
There's, there's an issue, right.
So it, it could probably stay in good repair if it was economically worthwhile to do that.
But if there's gonna be something else, then it'd have to go through the regular process. If it were as a game rate.
If it was one of repair.
Right.
If it was more than fifty percent investment in repair, it would be considered reconstruction. So.
And it may be worth it to put a different building on the property altogether.
At that point, so.
Yeah.
So, so I think you're, I think you're right in that we need to look at how that would impact the Gateway district, not just for, for his property, but for that larger property.
Right.
And again, it's, you know, it's, it's a really small piece of land.
Yeah.
Yeah, there are a number of factors. I mean, the road, the road configuration in that area is.
Is awful.
It's odd, really awful. And, you know, whether there, I mean, I was thinking it'd be worth finding out if there's, if the village, if, you know, if the decision was that it's worth making an investment in that area and start part of it is by changing the zoning and that turns out to be appropriate. One of the things I'd like to know is whether it's feasible to change that road configuration to make it safe because if we're gonna put more retail and stuff down there, then you anticipate more traffic.
Yeah.
That rail trail crossing scares the devil out of me.
Yeah, that's a tough one.
Well, you've got that, you've got Mohawk Road that comes down and hits Water Street slash Plains and they have that, that one intersection there that's a bit difficult, even more so in the winter time because you can't actually stop.
Oh, there are cars coming down Mohawk that wanna make a U-turn.
Yeah, so there are, so there, for me, there are, you know, if there's more or less, there's traffic issues.
Hey, do we need a roundabout there?
You just love those things, don't you?
I do.
That always reminds me of the movie Bull at Death, that, that thing. You have ours from more to top.
That's what this is going on.
I'll get some elevation on the flood plain.
Are there, are there things that we would like Rich to research for us?
Um, I don't necessarily, I'm not necessarily requesting research on this, but just asking, do you have any idea what the elevation of the first floor is for the other three buildings?
No.
One of them would certainly be lower than his.
Relative, relative to your house.
Yes, one of them's certainly lower. One of them's down on the ground.
Yeah. And one of them is a bit lower than his, just because I go on the rail trail quite a bit. His seems to be the highest.
At all? Yeah, seventeen, I think is the highest.
So yours is in the middle. That's right, yours is in the middle.
That's right. Okay, thanks. You can come back now. Oh, please do. Okay, um, finally, not finally, but close to finally. I'd like to mention that there will be a public workshop held on November twenty-first at seven P.M. That would be two days from now, so it's a Thursday night. And it's at SUNY New Paul's Student Union Building. And it's to, uh, this is conducted by the Ulster County Transportation Council. And it's being called an early step in the ongoing planning process for the New Paul's intermodal feasibility study. What they're saying is, does New Paul's need a new bus station? So the bus station that's now on the corner of Prospect and Main Street has been there for a long time and there are questions that have been raised about whether that's a good place for it. If it's the right size, if it's too much impact on traffic and pedestrian safety and so on, so. We invite, uh, we invite people to come and give their input and learn about the process. It starts at seven and they say it'll end at nine. And for more information, I think there's a, there's an article on the Ulster County Planning Board website. And I'm sorry, I don't have the, I don't have the URL for that, but that's that. We have, was there anything else I should?
No, thank you.
We have minutes to approve and they are from what date?
No, the, that.
Oh, that's, that's not.
That's the minutes that were from the village board.
Oh, okay.
Went with that.
Okay, so there are. So.
You think not November fifth?
I'm sorry.
November fifth?
Did Kate get them up?
She was out today.
Oh, Kate finished them off for me today, so it's, she got these out. I didn't think we would.
So it sounds to me like we could entertain a motion to adjourn.
Wait, sir.
Oh, yes.
Like pet item?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, not a problem.
Please, go ahead.
So the.
Bicycle racks.
The chair of the bicycle pedestrian committee contacted me and noted that on a couple of projects that we approved recently, we did not address chapter one ninety-eight, which was put together a few years ago and requires for various.
What projects were those?
Uh, he identified the professional building that Mr. Niffen has down at the bottom of Hasbrook. And the other one is Moxie Cupcake. And it sounds like from what I remember that we probably should have, that they both would have fit the criteria because additional parking. So they, so the, the chapter's very short and it just points out that when bike racks are needed and makes recommendations about what type of bike racks. And for residential, also talks about covered bike storage and. And for residential, also talks about covered bike storage. So I just wanted to bring it to people's attention that that's something...
Yeah, thanks. I, for some reason, I was thinking it was only residential, but of course it's...
Yeah, no, it's definitely retail as well. And I understand that he has gone ahead and spoken to the property owners and he's working with them.
Yeah.
So, but just going forward.
Now, retail is, Niffen's building considered retail?
No, it's professional office, but I guess, again, it would be, I'd have to look it up.
Okay.
So, just, that's all.
Now, may I have a motion for adjournment?
So...
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
And I'll make Rich's aye too. So, thank you very much, everybody.